All right, we'll call this meeting to order. And we'll begin with our roll call. Chris Robinson?
Here.
Katie Diabloz.
Yes.
Danielle David.
Here.
Karen Gronwell.
Here.
And Farlowe Kinning to the process here. And I'll do my usual silliness with grounding. I looked at today's agenda and feel that there is a lot on it that relates to the first element of our equity non-negotiables, which is that we accept each other. There's a lot in our agenda today about the diversity of our community, seeking out and understanding each other, people who are different from us. And so I really want to celebrate this goal, this truth about our district. We saw it at the open house. We'll see it in our rainbow resolutions throughout the school year. And I know we regularly model it with each other as we listen together and work together. So that's what I'm going to be grounding my work in today. And I would invite you to join me in that. If you would like to stand and say the pledge of allegiance, we can do that right now.
With the pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to item 1D, agenda approval. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Any opposed? Without opposition, the agenda is approved. Moving on to item 1E, approval of meeting minutes from August 21st.
I move to approve the August 21st meeting minutes.
Second.
Any discussion? I remember Katie identified an error.
Yes, there are names omitted. Let me see where that was. 4B. Third bullet point, the names were omitted. It should be that Ms. Bailey motioned and Ms. Gronwell seconded.
The third bullet point?
Yes.
Under B.
Under B.
Oh.
4B.
Nice catch, Katie.
Wow, what a clerk doing the clerk job.
clerk du jour. All right. So here's a technical question. Is that an amendment to the motion?
Uh, yes.
Well, the motion to approve.
It's a motion to approve. It remains a motion.
Right.
Yeah, so it remains a motion to approve the minutes.
Can we do a friendly amendment?
There's no such thing as a friendly amendment. That's what we learned in our parliamentary rules class. That's a fiction and a minute. Or we could just say to approve the minutes as edited per Katie's comments, right?
Yeah, that's for a small board.
Yeah, we're a small board. We can do that. Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, before this is a motion to approve the minutes as revised per Katie's comments. All in favor?
I am.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Moving on to item 2A, public comments. At this time, we invite visitors to speak on any non-agenda items. Do any visitors wish to speak on non-agenda items? Mr. Martin? If you could turn on your mic and state your name and address for the record.
Wayne Martin, 7275 North Port Washington Road, apartment 1221, Glendale, Wisconsin, 53217. First, I want to say thanks for on the school website, making it very readily apparent where the information on the budget is. That is appreciated. And then the question I will continue to ask probably every meeting, any plans on sending out a newsletter to the community?
The newsletter works right now.
Thanks for the question and your comments, Mr. Martin. Anyone else? Online? Okay, moving on to item 3, teacher return for the 2425 school year.
Kelly Goyssola, being will be presenting on our teacher return week. Thank you.
Sure. What you have in front of you is really a summary of our agenda. So the first summary you'll see here is our new teacher week. So this was a few days of professional development, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, that really focused on orienting our teachers from the district. And I'll just kind of give you a general overview. Their first day here, it's still fun. We started with a district welcome and make sure they saw first and foremost our district mission, vision, pillars. And quite essentially, our goal of that, that session is to help people form relationships with one another, just knowing that teachers need each other. But we moved on to a technology overview that was led by the great Taylor Datschau, orienting people to their technology, Google Suite, Skyword, student information systems that we're using. We then did a human resources presentation to make sure people knew of their benefits and how to utilize their benefits to the best of, to their very best capacity, and also how to use Skyword to inform us of days off, leaves of absence, how to, how to do those not fun stuff because they're going to be sick, all of that. We then had a pizza lunch with our mentor and mentees. All of our new teachers are assigned a mentor. And this was an opportunity for them to meet one another in a very formal fashion. Dr. Smith organized that. It was really nice. They then did building tours. So they took a tour of Parkway, and then they took a tour of Glen Hill. The building tours were led by our Stowe Hill staff.
Oh, nice.
And they did a great job because they know all the nooks and crannies of the building. And then they dug into Infinite Campus, which again is our student information system, just knowing that our teaching staff are competent a bit to get to know who their learners are, to make sure they had access to that right away. On Wednesday then was Partner Day. So this was when new teachers from all the partner districts spent a whole day together. And I'll give you an overview of that day. We met in Cat Brackford and did a greeting, essentially, again, to make connections with people from our partner districts. They then took some group pictures and loaded a big old bus that took them on a bus tour of all of the partner school communities. And it really gave people an opportunity to just put that footprint, footprints of all the schools that we did, to the High School. They came back for lunch. That was at High School. And then we did two learning sessions on closing the achievement gap. And those were held virtual, virtually. Okay, you can see, oh, and then I need to talk about Thursday. And then Thursday is when they spent a significant amount of time with their coaches. And the coaches worked with the new teachers, essentially focusing on curriculum, instruction, helping them lay out and get ready for that, those first few days of school and orienting them to all that they need to do in terms of their curriculum. That work is not done, but they at least either dip their toes into the water of what they'll be using for their instructional practices. Under that, you see that colorful paragraph that gives you the new teacher feedback. So one, highly dissatisfied, five, highly satisfied. And you can see we had a couple of lower numbers there and you know that and understand that and will adjust. Our goal is for everybody to be highly satisfied with all, with all the learning sessions provided.
Sure. I got a little lost in closing the achievement gap learning sessions, which is one of the lower numbers. Where, where was that? What day?
That was held during our partner.
Okay.
During our partner day, it was all virtual.
What does that like?
There were two different sessions. One was led by David O'Connor from CPI. Understanding our influence as educators was the title of that one. And then the second session was Dr. Janine Jones, and the focus was equitable classrooms.
So was it like a Zoom presentation? Was it interactive?
I was there the whole time. It was relatively interactive, but the people there were in a room while sharing the Zoom board. And so I think that there was maybe potentially a mismatch in terms of how the interactive activities were planned.
Oh, okay.
And it was very long. I mean, it was four hours of sitting in a virtual setting. And so some of the comments were essentially about, you know, the like of staying virtual.
Sure. Okay, cool. Thank you.
And then the next part is our teacher welcome back. So this is when all of our teachers returns. We worked really hard to situate our sessions during this, during the welcome week, within our district mission and vision and make sure we're aligning the pillars with the sessions that we're leading. And that's something we're trying to remind each other and ourselves to do whenever we're standing up in front of staff, to really help people see how everything aligns and how everything week really needs to do, needs to connect with our district mission and vision. So we had a welcome back. And a welcome to the strategic plan that Hannah led. That was great. And then after that, all the teaching staff headed back to their buildings where they received some building information, building nuts and bolts. Lunch was on their own. And then you can kind of see various things that were specific to job categories or people's roles were then kind of tucked in there for the rest of the day. Okay, so that was Monday. Tuesday was, it started the day on 504 professional learning, and that's just, was it really launching with the why? Like, what has happened historically that, that has resulted in section 504? And historically, where did that come from? So I think anytime we have something like 504 plans for people to understand why it's important to follow those, they have to know the history of why they keep to be. So we did try to situate that in the why, and then give people an opportunity to look at the 504, the 504 plans for the students they serve to really work to develop a plan for how they differentiate their universal instructions so that they're needed and need. And so we're, we, when we talk about that in the leadership team, we talk about the use of terms designing to the edges. So knowing I've got this student in my class that really benefits when I do X, Y, and Z, what if I just do that for the whole class? Boy, I could be needing the new student I don't know about because I think disability that I'm unaware of or hadn't been identified. And then they were given a lot of time so that presentation was not two and a half hours. It was probably about 45 minutes to an hour. And then staff was given an opportunity to sit down, look through 504s and IEDs. And they worked to kind of situate some of those accommodations classroom teachers are responsible for providing in the classroom. We do have a significant number of 504s coming in. There's a lot of them. And we needed to make sure there was a system for our teachers to organize the information. And then it's easy to see in front of you, oh, my goodness, I need check-ins for a large group of projects for five kids in my class. How about I just do it for everybody? Right? So that gave us an opportunity there. And then we had Partner Day, which was again tied with our partner districts. The Partner Day was launched by all of the superintendents. It was very positive. Their keynote was about affirmation and collaboration, and they brought former students from each of the partner schools to share their story and their experience attending our schools. It was really great to see. We also had the Nicolay High School choir playing music, welcoming staff members. That was lovely. Lunch was provided. And then teachers had about an hour and a half to meet, like within vertically aligned groups. So our speech pathologists met together, our first grade teachers met together, and it really provided them an opportunity to talk about their work specific to the students they're serving. And, and that, that was their protected time to talk about their professional practice. Then they were given planning time. And then Wednesday's agenda, agendas are a little bit all over the place. You could see because there were things we needed to situate and make sure we got in there during the week. But some things to highlight was a special education professional learning, similar to the 504 professional learning, focusing on the why. Why has special education come to? Because I do, again, think when you frame things in the why, people have a better understanding and are more open, right, to learn, to learning about their role and how that impacts them with their work. We also had some CPI, CPI train in there, our crisis prevention train, that's aligned with our nonviolent crisis intervention training. Trying to think of what else. And again, some prep time because Parkway had their health set on Wednesday. I'll kind of highlight some of the big things from Thursday. I don't think you want me to go over every piece. Okay. There were various trains. Again, some of the big ones were Act 20 training, really helping get the Parkway K4 through second grade teachers ready, right, for some of the requirements that are coming with Act 20 related to assessment. Lots of collaboration time was provided. We had English language learning, an English language learning session that was wonderful for, again, really about differentiated instruction or designing to the hedges, knowing that diversity in our classrooms. We also offered our peer professionals some rotations within allied arts. So one of the things that we were finding is that they go to an allied art, and they're not really sure what to do in that space. And we thought it would be a really good opportunity to orient our peer professionals to things like the music room and for them to talk about their goal, their goals, or how they represent their lessons, but also if there is something that they need to do that helps to get in the classroom, to orient them to where this is where you might be able to find that tool to modify this lesson, or this is something that if you need a calming spot in the corner, this is where you can find that within my learning space. So I think that was really great. Willie led a session for his full staff on planning to the edges in the block. So knowing that our block is 80 minutes in length, he really took some time to go over that plan to the edges of the staff. And then we also have 90, 95% group that is our, you know, what we're using to supplement our current ELA curriculum that's focused on mathematics instruction. So we did some curriculum training with that, which is really great. Again, planning time, and then Glen Hill had in the open house. And then Friday was a half day. Again, we had an English language learner professional development at Parkway. And then we had some specific meetings for specific students or specific staff that may have learning needs. And those were individualized information that we have. A district-wide agenda, and that was just based on what people need to know before kiddos, before kiddos enter the room. That was super great.
And I just asked for a quick clarification. What is the AA, the Parkway AA teams?
Allied arts.
Thank you.
And then connected to that, and this is not done, being updated. So the link in there is live and should be updating as people are submitting their feedback. But these are some of the questions we ask people to read on a scale from strongly disagree and strongly agree. Their response to those two different things in part of you. So I know the strategic plan, mission, vision, pillars was the first thing. We wanted to make sure that people are walking away with clarity on that. Learning from this week helped me understand why differentiated instruction or planning to the edges is. And then the professional learning and work related to English learners, IEDs, 504s, help prepare for the diverse learners of my. So our next step is the leadership team will utilize feedback to refine any assessments, obviously looking at some of those lower areas and making sure, we can ensure that greater satisfaction. We'll continue to focus on differentiated instruction or planning to the edges. So teachers are fit to be the diverse of the classrooms. And we'll revisit district-wide feedback to identify potential leverage points to be prepared for upcoming professional development days, which the first one is like tomorrow, September 27th.
Thank you, Kelly. I just want to say thank you for, to the whole administrative team. This, this table is like one of the most organized things I've seen.
I'll turn mine off.
And it's just, I love the clarity of it to know who's attending what and to see what each day looked like. So this is incredibly helpful for me. I'm exhausted just listening to you and reading through this. I did want to just say that this idea, when you say designing to the edges, I think keep inclusion, like where inclusion is impossible because serving one student with a particular need might actually serve all students. I just love that. I love that you're focused on the why. And I just really appreciate this. On the Act 20 training, I don't know what looks different for teachers. I think it might be helpful for us to hear at some point what that looks like, what changes teachers are dealing with, what additional burdens might be imposed, how our curriculum already aligned to Act 20. I think that might be useful information at some point as the year goes on. So I wanted to just share that question, but otherwise, thank you. Anyone else have comments or questions? Danielle?
I love hearing about that 504, the time that you gave us the work on that. I imagine, maybe this is a dumb question, but is there going to be like follow-up time and support for those teachers who just sort of started that work on these professional learning days, like as they go throughout the year?
Yes, absolutely. It's part of their, it is already embedded in their professional learning team. So that is when they need to be looking at specific student names as well. But also, we've talked about this a lot, making sure we dedicate specific time to review IEDs and 504s throughout the school year. So yes.
Okay, yes. Great. And I would love if you, if you could share the why, the 504, whatever that presentation was, I just personally would like to also know that. And then the, did you solicit feedback from the district-wide week? Because we're looking at the new teacher feedback, right, which is about 21?
What it was like? No, so the colorful one?
Oh.
Right?
This later, the later.
Oh, the later one. Oh, okay, sorry. The sentence above talks about the new teachers. So I got.
The rainbow paragraph.
New teachers.
Yeah.
And, okay, and so this is district-wide, and that's why there's only 21 responses. So it'll.
There's, they're not.
Okay, that makes sense. That makes more sense. Last question, the planning to the edges, is that like a intentional language? Is it like a specific curriculum? Or is that just something where you guys have coined to be something? We have not coined that.
Oh, I wish I could say that.
We gotta do that. We want to be really careful not making people feel like you're adding one more thing. Like when you're saying differentiated instruction, even though as educators, you know that that is not a term, but to make it feel like it's not something different. It's something many teachers are likely already, we felt that using the term designing to the edges didn't make it feel like, like it's something.
Okay, cool. It feels less silent.
Yeah.
With that language, right?
Yeah.
It actually reminds me a lot of universally designed learning.
Yes.
And so very much, you know, it's planning for everybody and how easy can it be? And quite frankly, some of my absolutely most successful teachers I've seen within the, in the years have, have taken what I've modeled and applied it across their classroom. And it's been profoundly effective. So, you know, it's exciting. So when you see it in action.
Thank you, Kelly. All right, before I forget, so I don't want to overlook it. Speaking of new, I do want to point out that we have a new person behind the camera today, Diane Knight, who is our Taylor Dassel 2.0. And I want to thank Taylor very specifically for stepping into the breach in the spring with competence and graciousness and just
Dedication.
dedication and all the, all the words, all the good things. And so I want to thank you for doing that. And thank you for taking on the job of librarian in Parkway or library specialist. I don't know the title. So I just want to give you a very, very heartfelt shout out for that. I'm sure we all share that feeling. And welcome Diane to a potentially difficult job, herding these cats, but I appreciate you, you joining us. So just want to make sure I remember to say that. Onto agenda item 4A, Good Hope Property Update. And I think we have Mr. Mike Hacker here to lead us through that discussion. Welcome, Mike.
What's that?
Do you present?
I do, yeah. Should I plug in or do you have?
And we have an email.
First, it's great to be here. Big to see you. Congrats on starting the new school year. You know, a lot has evolved since I was here last, and obviously a lot of good stuff to come. And so today, we're gathering to, in this agenda, to talk about continuing discussion around that property. As for those that I have not worked with, a couple new bases in our, Mike Akram is consulting, a licensed architect, but I provide owners services to school teachers. And so that looks and feels like lots of different things, a lot of different types of projects, but essentially it's a layer of additional support and expertise when it comes to planning around facilities, how we're using them, how do we gauge long-term visions for how we should be using them? And then in some cases, supporting districts and investing in those. So I was fortunate to be a part of the team that supported the district last year around doing a deep dive into the existing state of our facilities, how we're using them, how they're serving educationally, as well as from an energy efficiency standpoint, bricks and mortar standpoint, all those good things. So at the end of that process, a full report was done and did, those three board members that were with us last summer, remember, we toured each of the schools and kind of got a firsthand behind the scenes tour of each of those buildings. And out of that, and where that process, I'll say paused, was as we started to really dive into and sink our teeth into what a long-term master plan vision looks like. Right? So we just started to scratch the surface. And anytime with any district, that's pretty exciting, right? It's also can make us really nervous because things look different and the process looks different. We got to make sure we have all voices as part of that. Then eventually we committed. We hadn't gotten to that point. And eventually we made dialogue about how best to pick back up from what it were. But in that moment of transition, we had just started to talk about Good Hope and how it related to that master plan as well as how it related to just how it's serving the district today. And I think my hope today was to do a little bit of a recap. I don't want to spend a long time, but make sure that for new members who have a good foundation to continue this conversation. We have a little bit of new information. And Michelle, I know we haven't had a chance to work directly one-on-one, but I know we've had some dialogues around the financial side of, of that building. So we're going to update you on that. We also had a couple items related to value of the building. And I want to just introduce that formally to the group. So a little bit of background just to set this able. So a little bit of background, just to set this able, but really want to be sure before we leave today, I can figure out what is needed from the board to help continue this conversation. Sound good? Good basically? All right. So next slide. And so as noted, a full facility study of all buildings across the district was conducted in 2013. Next slide will show us summary of Good Hope. So Good Hope is just under 16 acres in total. It's actually two parcels. So it's an important note there that it's actually two separate tax ID parcels. There's the portion to the east with the buildings on and a portion to the west, which is where the green spaces, the ball diamonds. The building is 56,000 square feet, was originally built in 1958 and had an addition as recently as 1965. Right now, the school district is not utilizing that building for any core educational delivery. We do have four tenants or four users in that bill. The first one, Glendale Heights Childcare, Bader Hello High School, Bella Beauties, Dan Studio, and then the four acres Bridge Club. The next slide is just a aerial view of that site, just so you have a visual of what that looks like in terms of the two parcels. The building in blue is the existing building there. You can kind of get a sense of, of scale there. Obviously it's success off of Good Hope Road. Right at the intersection, you could open Green Bay.
And that dotted line is the division of the two parcels?
It is. Yeah. Just to the west of the drive there. There is a cul-de-sac or a residential road, kind of in that southwest corner there that touches. The school, as far as I understand, doesn't utilize that for, or the users don't utilize that for access. I'm sure it serves the ball diamonds and recreation. The next slide, next slide is just a floor plan, just again to orient everybody to that existing building. Key takeaways here really again. If in fact, this was today to be utilized educationally, the architectural team that supported the study identified just under 500 students that could fit in that building. Okay. So just today we said, what is the capacity? Start teaching in that building. We could fit up to 500 within that facility and serve, continue to serve educational purposes. So the other layer that came along with the facility study was a full analysis of all the bricks and mortar, all the building systems. All the potential investments that the districts start to prepare for forthcoming. And the team at Plante Resic, as well as with Findorf, brought their teams through the building. They looked at all the state of the existing systems, all the prior reports. That had been done by the district and prior vendors and put together a thorough analysis. And this is just a very, very summarized version of a very thick document that breaks every one of these down. So we can get deeper into that down the line if and when. Needed. What they had done was they identified two different buckets. So the first one was just ongoing maintenance costs. And they broke those into three periods of time, basically short-term to within the next 10 years. Okay. And the total in the next 10 years that the district should expect per the report is 6.6 million dollars of facility investments that are needed. Okay. And there you're thinking roofs, windows that are failing, updates, the HVC system, lighting, things like that.
And that's in current dollars, right?
Current dollars. Yep. And the intent is though that we should note that this is to continue doing what you're doing. Right? Using the building, how are you using it today? Not updating it, not changing uses. Okay. Soon as we start renovating that building, meaning renovating a bathroom or start renovating classrooms, then we're going to have a series of code compliance triggers that kick in. That will add another 3.1 million dollars of added costs that are coming. So in all, 10 years out with some minor updates, improvements to support the tenants that are there or district uses. The district, the district should assume about 9.8 million dollars of need floating out there.
Can I, can I, do you have a, so in level one, two, or three, do you know if any of that like land maintenance would trigger the ADA? Or is it, like, could you get through those, whatever, next 10 years without triggering?
My understanding is the latter. Yep. So my understanding is the investment in the maintenance costs would not trigger. That is assumed whatever ADA update would be, meaning if you replace a drinking fountain, you'd have to replace it with an ADA compliant drinking fountain, as an example. The building recommendations example would be is you go in and say, okay, we're going to replace all the toilets in this bathroom. Now we have to update the toilets, have the clearance, which means that we have to change the partitions. Then we're going to have to change the door swing because we don't have enough clearance there. And you can see that snowball grows very quickly. So. Yep. Good, good question.
So this additional building recommendation piece, that's not only if it were to be moved into educational use, that's literally if like we just, like it's a. Just scope of improvement that's going to trigger that.
Yeah. So our current tenants that are in the building, if they approach the school and say, hey, these bathrooms no longer serve us, we really ask you to consider investing in them. We go in, decide to invest in them. The bucket of projects here starts to kick in.
To meet 21st century standards instead of 1958.
Yeah. Yeah. And I think it's important that it's isolated this way because, you know, if we just continue going down the line and change nothing, that's always an option. Do nothing certainly is always an option. We want the district to be sure we're prepared for our strategies to prepare for potentially over $6 million of investment in the next 10 years. That's a lot of money that we need to start to strategize around. Let it prioritize. If we decide to support making those updates, whether it's 21st century updates or just supporting the tenants we have, likely that number is going to increase. We just want to level set with what that expectation should be.
I mean, I also am just thinking like if sort of the lack of forward thinking maintenance that we've done on that building is, is also just a potential liability, not just from the tenants. Like if you have a student or I don't know, a community member who trips on a non-ADA, et cetera, you know, like, right, that could, that. A lawsuit could potentially trigger your get to make ADA. Upgrades and updates, right?
Yeah. The building is within the district's architectural portfolio. So it's what I assume would be covered within the district's property insurance. And with that, I'm sure the insurance agent that comes out does the adjustments regularly is assessing those things and making sure you're covered from an insurance standpoint. Doesn't necessarily mean that. Certain side of those updates. Yeah. So this I think was an important baseline because this was a launch point for us, I think, to really assess how this building is going to continue to serve the district for the next 10 years. What's your expectation there? The next slide will be new information and it may even be slightly outdated from this morning as we continue to evolve and update this information as, as the district assesses its current finances. And so one of the key takeaways was, or some of the really good questions that we received were around how financially stable, if you will, this is as the current model, just financially. Not in terms of the tenants that are there, not in terms of how it's serving educationally, just at the baseline, is this, are we subsidizing the use of this building as a district? Or in fact, is this a moneymaker or a rebranding? And so with that said, Michelle, is it appropriate for me to present these or are there, is there other data you would like to?
You can present this. I did want to clarify a couple of things. Do you want me to clarify that now or just speak on that or?
Sure. Why don't I just give an overview? You can dive in. So the baseline is first we have to look at operating. So what is it costing the district to just operate that building? That's going to be energy, we're paying for gas and lighting and all that good stuff. We pay for insurance, we pay our custodial staff to go in and maintain and clean and manage those cutting grass. Falling snow, all this stuff it takes to operate that facility. The range that we had identified leading into today was 350 to 450,000 dollars a year to operate that. And then we flip and say, okay, what is being brought in at revenue standpoint? And that's really from the leases, the tenants that are there. And right now, on an annual basis, just over 277,000 dollars a year brought in.
That's, that's missing one tenant, right?
Well, I think that's a clarification, I think that we want to, to double check on as a valve or in fact, do we have lease structures in place? Or if it's just the three and so feel free, Michelle.
Yeah. On the revenue, you know, this is excluding any tax revenue that's levy for this building. We have an estimate for all four tenants of about 301,722 for current. Lease rates. And then just to, you know, speak on the operating expenditures, the reason for the, you know, wide range is based on, you know, looking at historical. If a boiler was replaced, those types of things would change, you know, from the low end to the high end. So there is some fluctuation in that, those expenditures over the last several years.
And I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, but a number of those were emergency response items, right? We're not. Getting out ahead of the problems or reacting. It's there, it's there, right? So, so with that. However, those numbers exactly lie, we're functioning within the red there, right? Where we are subsidizing the use of that building. At a rate of potentially a little over a hundred thousand dollars a year to function as we are within that facility.
Can I pause for a question? Yeah, I have a, I'm going to go first. On operating expenditures, I remember hearing at some point that some of our custodial staff were doing work at Good Hope and that some of their salary. Was paid out of our fund at 80. Does that ring a bell? And so is that, whatever that amount is, is that included in operating expenses?
That is.
Oh, that is. So those salaries, somewhere in your accounting system, there's breakdown. So we, which comes out of fund ten and which comes out of.
And we just updated that as well.
Danielle, can you have a question?
Yeah. Okay. So do we know how long it is run at a loss? Like how long we've been, been historically going back? Is this?
We can run a report. Okay. Have the, you know, actual expenditures per year and actual revenues per year. Because those cost too much weight.
Love to just to know how, to know the history. The rents, are you able to break down the, the four rents? That's something else I would like to know, if you don't know that. It's okay. My question about them, are they in line with market value? Or rent or what they are?
I have not looked at that as far as market value.
That's, these are just sort of follow up questions. I understand you. Questions are. And then I'd have, so of the four, do they have current leases or are we operating in sort of like a month to month without a formal lease in place?
I've looked at this point based on the paperwork that we can find in the business office. It's month to month. I do not believe that those, those leases are current. We did have an opportunity to take a look at, you know, rental increases over the last couple of years and there's been some, there's been some incremental increases. I think Michelle could probably speak to some percentage increases, but. Those values are holding still because the leases are month to month.
Okay. So then I guess I'd wonder what the notice, if the notice requirement is the same for a commercial tenant as it would be for like a residential tenant in a month to month.
Notice to make.
So that's another question I have. And then my last question from this area is I would be curious to know how many people are served by each of the four tenants? And if there's a breakdown of like Glendale residents, students, staff, I think that would be just something interesting to, to know and how many are not Glendale. Residents, non-residents, et cetera. Anyone else have questions or comments? This maybe burn at this time?
This is a minor point I'd just be interested in who is currently using the athletic space, the outside space and to include that in the. Yeah, I, what I'm sitting here thinking about is that this operational deficit understates the actual deficit. Spending we're looking at because over the next 10 years, we're going to be spending. You know, one tenth of $6 million, $600,000 a year on average, just to maintain the building. So the actual deficit is significantly higher than that. You know, longitudinal view, it's a significant deficit that we're looking at right now. So that's. Is that an appropriate way to think about it? I guess I should be asking you experts. Cause that's how I'm looking at it.
Yeah, I'm trying to be very objective, right? But yes, I think the reality is that, you know, if. Assuming all accuracy of that 10-year projected of, of need, right? You can keep milk in the roof as long as possible and putting patches on it before you eventually need to replace, but it's coming, right? Those have life expectancy to them and same thing with HVC systems and whatnot. Again, I think as where we kind of paused the process before is where we want to kind of reemerge this around, what is the long-term vision for using that facility? Cause again, if it is around either reserving it for long-term use, so we're going to find a use for it now, I think we should assess. Is renting it as we are the best way to do that? Or should it be mothballed? Or should we look at some other, right? We should at least put everything on the table. So we know that financially we're as viable as, as possible.
Oh, no, sorry. There's.
So my, I actually, oh, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to say too, that currently those operating expenditures are including some of those, you know, maintenance needs that have had to happen over time.
So, so I guess that would be kind of leading into my comment, which is I had perhaps not understood the scope or the intent of tonight's presentation, but I had hoped that there would be kind of a broader presentation around. Viable options and how to consider our pathways and how to weigh those options and understand them. One of the things I'm curious about is we have two separate tax parcels, you know? There has not been a conversation about it in that manner. So, you know, how do we consider all of this? How do we understand the big picture? It's a, you know, really is like a community owned property that there are things happening on both parcels that a lot of community members participate in. And I, I think we want to be really inclusive of our considerations and understanding the broad impact, right? While we understand our, our job here is, is the school district. I think you've asked a question, which is great. And I think the rest of my questions. Will either of you answer it later, but. Or perhaps in another meeting. But let's move forward unless somebody has a question right now, and then we can see if I want to bring up the rest of this.
I think I have three more quick slides, but it may start to tiptoe down that path a little bit in terms of where we go from here. So the next slide is a regrounding in what we have learned about the district's enrollment projections going forward. So one of the critical decisions, I think, before you can decide whether or not we keep the building or we keep it in the state that it's in, is making sure we're not going to need it in the future, right? So if we're in a position where the enrollment projection suggested that there's going to be significant growth coming at some point. And all of a sudden we, we need to put additions on the buildings and things. First question is, are we going to be not the building we have, right? Or not planned for further utilization of that. And so. Back in 2023, in March and August, we had two separate enrollment projections run. The first one was by Applied Populations Lab, which is a, you know, by, excuse me, out of UW at Madison. Their projection looked at a slight increase across the district. You see there about 33 students and then 38 here at the middle school. Okay. And then we also contacted and worked with MD Rockers. And the difference again between those two studies, MD Rockers approaches their methodology more from an urban development standpoint, which in our context, as we look at. A mall that's going to continue to reinvent itself and more multi-family housing and now a new large private school coming into the neighborhood. They took a different angle at looking at that. And, and there suggests a slight decline. Neither of those though, as we look at the district, the size we are and the projection of 15 years was significant enough to suggest that we need to make significant moves one way or another, based on the enrollment going forward. So, so steady, if you will, based on the, the feedback we got out of both of those. Okay. The next slide is again, kind of a teaser to, or a little bit behind the scenes of where we paused before. So in the last step, we had gotten up to just sort of talk about what is, what might some long-term master plan visions look like, right? You may remember we looked at different grade configurations as a driver, right? And what is ideal grade configuration setup for the district? What might it take to, to get to that from a facility standpoint? What additions and renovations we need to support that, all in context of what we already know we need to do to invest in our buildings from an ADA and code compliance standpoint. And here, I think, Karen, you had brought up, I remember right, in those sessions, some very good question. Ready to dive into yet around what have we studied about reusing that building from an educational standpoint? And I, I just wanted to introduce tonight that dialogues were had around. And I I just wanted to introduce tonight that dialogues were had around that, right? What what would it look like if we uh in this case, and it's small uh on there, but were to say, you know, maybe second through fourth grade pushes out there, which may free up space in some of the other buildings and allow us to do some other things? And so had started some dialogue around what that would look like. We also had a conversation around what might uh two parallel elementaries look like? Meaning two K four, K five elementaries and and how would how would boundaries work? And so we started tiptoe down the path and just hadn't had time yet to fully evolve those. So I did want to tonight just be sure you heard out of that that, you know, I'm wide open to continued dialogue about that. If in fact, the board and the community felt like that was worth doing. Um though I will say a key takeaway in this study is that we believe that there's capacity in the two buildings you do have. Okay, so I didn't want tonight for the group to leave with uh hearing me or potential takeaway being we don't have the capacities we need to use those that, you know, used to. I don't know that that's the case. In the conditions where we looked at additions to buildings, that was really to get the grade configuration ideal, right? Which is pushing pushing fourth graders back over to the elementary. And that was the only reason we looked at needing more square footage in that location.
There was one configuration, if I remember right, where you incorporated like a a daycare facility into this building, right?
Yep, yeah, we did, yeah. And that was part of the strategy around, you know, if in fact we were able to identify an ideal grade configuration and find a solution to that and at the same time and create an available space here.
Right.
Uh this building is set up such a way that we could on the lower level, ideally have a dedicated entrance isolated from the rest of the building, create either uh tenant space, daycare, educational space. Uh we talked about uh furthering our partnership with Senior Center or creating community, like a fitness center space or a pool access. There are a lot of good dialogues that emerged that uh by availing more capacity in this building may allow us to do some other things, which obviously ties to the Good Hope long term planning as well.
Then that would be more Fund eighty oriented, so it'd be community centered, but not as long as it hasn't attached to the school.
So it has a separate entrance, yes, yeah.
Yep, separate gas meter and stuff, but all things that we could find ways to to manage for sure.
But is it fair to say, so those sound like like major facilities considerations that I don't think we're we're going to be having or I mean, at least.
Not this year, not the, I mean.
Probably, right, I think if the idea is that you have a tier referendum, that at the maybe by the end of those two years, then you can you know, the ideas we can show were um uh engaging in active stewardship and fiscally sound and like possibly then it would make sense to start talking. So I think when we are thinking about the Good Hope building, it makes sense, like I want to separate the the like facilities dreaming about these buildings. And you're saying that we can like between these two buildings, you can dream facilities of to accommodate our student population and to do, right?
Yeah, the takeaway there was that we did enough test fitting on the two sites just to safely say we can additions on to our way to support a vision there all in alignment with what we just talked about. We also tested a new building, a second building on this site. Not suggesting that we'll build new, but
Right.
there would be impacts, couldn't fit, yes or no, while we thought it, it could.
Okay.
Just again, so take that for what it's worth, all just to continue to assess, right? Really, what is the long term goals and viability of of all services?
I guess I'm just saying, I think you prob, we'd probably have to um come to an agreement around Good Hope and how it's going to serve us, right? Or we get to those those other conversations. So yeah, kind of where everyone's is at.
Maybe, yes. I mean, it's all part of one story. Uh facilities planning doesn't have to, I mean, you don't wait until the last minute to do facilities planning. We can continue to the work of
Yeah.
evaluating and thinking in a universal way.
Yeah.
Is what I think. I I mean, I don't know. I haven't honestly, I haven't thought too much about it yet. No, I don't think so, priorities, but.
Well, that's my.
It is a question, do we just full stop pause or do we continue to do some thinking and planning around the facility's futures?
Mm hmm.
You know, as part of our stewardship.
No, I don't think we have enough information yet.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And and to be clear, I think my questions around Good Hope arose from that third building that we were always surprised to see. On the presentation, because Good Hope wasn't presented at all as a used space. And I was like, wait, we have three months.
I believe there was like a calculation at some point, maybe about how much it might cost to turn that building into an educational facility. And I mean, it's a lot, right?
Yeah, that's definitely one of the options and uh so we just put everything on the table. Try to work our way back to what the ideal option was. We did look at, if we build new, a new third building, what would the equal solution be to renovate Good Hope? Right, just so we get the apples, apples, embarrassing to say.
Okay.
Is that even the right location? If if they were cost neutral, let's just say for a moment, they cost the same to to build and and operate. Uh would it be ideal from a geography standpoint? Would it be ideal from a parent access standpoint, would it, right? And um all just, I think, healthy master planning dialogue. And you're spot on, it's always a chicken or the egg with these things, right? And in ideal worlds, you have a master plan, you function, you're functioning with it. So every time we change a light bulb, we know we're doing it in alignment with what the master plan is. Um we don't fully have that at this point, so continue dialogue about how does that evolve? You can do a master plan and not have a referendum attached to it, obviously.
Yeah.
Right, goes without saying. Um uh uh so certainly not here to suggest those two things are are touched.
Right, I I suspect the urgency we're feeling around this is that it is a um money losing building right now.
Right.
And so that is extremely problematic. You know, I I I like, we've talked about this before, that if we're, it's hard to justify levying taxes on a property that's losing money year to year. It's just hard to justify that in this day and age. So it just creates a sort of urgency, knowing that this situation is continuing to exist and trying to understand how we extract ourselves from it. And I I suspect that's part of what's underlying you, like we have this dream of what our facilities could be and then we've got this property that's losing money. And that we're not even using for educational purposes, except tangentially, we we know it supports our community.
And it's in disrepair.
Right, right, exactly. And it doesn't meet modern ADA compliance standards, which for me is like, you know, obviously, I think for all of us here is sort of a you know, upsetting, it upsets me actually, you know, so anyway.
Like to that point, none of our buildings do, so we can't.
Right, right, right. No, I know that, I know that. I mean, it's all very upsetting that we're not successfully meeting modern ADA standards. Um but in this case, you know, I I mean, I I'm sitting here just sort of reeling with the money loss that we're incurring every year. It's just, I I need to process that.
And so how long have we been losing money and why we're previous? Still okay with that? Like I guess I'm wondering what the, yeah.
So one last slide, since I quickly introduced this and then um have to answer any further questions. So the natural gut check is just what is it worth? Right, and not here to tonight to get out of myself or or the board in any way, but we were asked, can we just level up on what would this even be worth to the district if we were to sell it? Okay, so uh we reached out to Colliers, which is a broker that does a lot of this type of work. Uh we got a broker's opinion of value, a BOB, which is very similar to if you were considering selling your house. You start calling some brokers and they sit down with you and say, okay, here are some comps, here's what we think based on what we see. Uh they did the same thing, so they uh toured the building, they put together a dozen comps of of similar uh sales in the region and put together a uh potential listing value or a recommended listing value of two point five million dollars.
For both parcels together.
Both parcels, yeah. Um they also looked into the strategies around what would drive the highest value, meaning what redevelopment potential would drive the highest value. Um that uh they did their research, but also wanted to reiterate to to the group that we did uh have an opportunity prior superintendent, business manager and myself to meet with the city. And so we did have one meeting just to sit down to say, uh we're not here today to suggest this is happening. We just want to get a gut check on what is your vision as a city for this pocket of the community? This, you know, particular parcel, uh are there uh comp comprehensive plan visions or master plan visions you have that we should know about as we're considering things? And so um uh not here tonight to fully uh play out that conversation, but just to let you know that initial dialogue did happen. Uh multifamily housing is what Colliers thought would garner the greatest value and that would align with what the city said at at in that meeting as a potential great reuse, there's more density in that in that pocket. Um now uh whether that's what it is or not, you know, part of the balance here is, you know, does the uh there are strategies that if we're going down this path, I recommend the board consider around how you control what does happen on that site, right? There are certain community strengthening reuses that I think are uh to the advantage of the district and and of the community as a whole. Um there are also some things that we may in fact not want to see happen in that site and there may be some strategies to to manage that. Um uh with that said, if it were multifamily housing, the other layer here is that Colliers projected about a hundred and ninety two units. Uh there is one word error on that one yet where um if we took the MD Rockers report, they have projected it takes twenty to twenty five units, not students.
Oh.
Twenty twenty five units to get to give one student, right? So if we did have a hundred ninety two uh uh units redeveloped there, the district could assume uh right around ten students potentially um coming into the district.
That's gonna be no vacancies.
A hundred percent, yep. And that's just, uh that's the other layer to this, right? If it's gonna be housing in a single family versus multifamily, um I I would recommend the district put everything on the table. Like that would be a benefit if it were housing, if there were students and they were, you know, the district's students, that would be a benefit in that long term.
And right across the street is the development.
Another.
That's under discussion right now. It got approved, we got a hundred and fifty apartment units. Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, right or wrong, those, I just wanted to present that. Um the district is not in any contractual relationship with Colliers, this is something they did as an opportunity to kind of get to know the district. Um but they they we do a proposal and and if you did want to pivot to further dialogue around, you know, how best to strategize around that, so.
I think there had been a conversation around potentially kind of triangulating and getting additional proposals, uh which is also pretty typical, right? Has that been in the works at all?
Yeah, so um.
Yeah.
Oh, you need to get a formal valuation?
I think the dialogue I was a part of was, could we get an appraisals? So an appraisal different than a a broker's opinion of value, right? Appraisal similar to your house, would be hiring someone to come in and establish a professionally stamped appraisal for the value of that. A lot of times that's tied to financing and going for grants and things like that. Um can certainly do that, did gather some proposals to do that. I think again, there was a five thousand dollarish number to to land on that. I'm not sure this is free.
This is a.
Yeah.
This proposal, it will be a broker who is offering this and then you could like hire them to test their listing, they're looking for the percentage, right?
In the end, the, you know, the market will dictate what the value is for it. This uh Colliers in this example, they have no vested interest in overselling you on what this is worth or undervaluing, right? So I think you can be confident that this at least level sets with us, you know, about what that property.
Can you speak more to the strategies? Because I think one of the things that concerns me is um having said on the plan commission, there are things like, like people say, oh, we can make sure that it's zoned correctly. Well, I I said on the plan commission where we rezoned things. So I I just want to make sure that we understand what those potential strategies are, perhaps again, not a conversation tonight.
Sure.
But just like if that is a direction that we take, how do we make sure that we're doing this thoughtfully, intentionally and in a way that truly, like how binding are those things?
Yep.
How do we ensure that longitudinally, this is something that will stand?
Yeah, so you're spot on and in most communities, whether it's like an economic development board or a city or village or a school district, can't put together uh like an RFP process
Right.
where potential uh purchasers would need to meet whatever criteria you outlined. So you need to put together a proposal that shows us exactly how this would be reused, how many units you would get in. You'd have gates or thresholds that they'd have to pass and uh they'd be doing their due diligence and need to prove to you that they're taking active steps towards meeting those goals, whatever those are. Uh you can define what community strengthening meant, right? Uh whatever that, you know, however that word to be defined. Um that process is longer, right? It's more arduous, you probably need a consultant to support the district in maneuvering and writing an RFP and doing some of those things. Um the fastest way would be to list it, put a sign out there, drive it forward. Um some districts preemptively rezone it, so uh the underlying concern is, I just to say, another school comes in, private school and says, we're gonna, it's a school, it's perfect, okay? We can just start teaching in it and those automatically become competition to the district, right? So uh there are ways to, you know, just preemptively rezone that parcel so that a school couldn't. Could it be rezoned? Yes, but at least they would have to go through the process and then the politics could start to play themselves out. Um so I have worked with districts that have done that, said, we don't know, even know exactly what we're gonna do, we just know we're not gonna use it institutionally. We're gonna work with the municipality to rezone that that parcel.
And those are pretty binding. I mean, the RFPs for that initial purchaser would be binding, because that would be how we approach the agreement, but how quickly can they turn around then?
That's always the question mark, right? And once the transaction is complete and they own the property, it ain't, you're not in control. It'd be different if you were the developer, right? If you own the land and say, you know, we have to, we have to approve every move on it, that's that's very different, but you know, obviously it's a school issue, not at that.
So that's, that's a legal question. I don't know how much we can entail property that way.
Right.
But that's maybe something to add to the list of questions. What I'm hearing tonight is a lot of questions. Um it sounds like I'm not writing down all these questions, but I'm guessing Anna and Michelle you are. So I I don't know if everyone agrees here, tell me if you don't, but it sounds like we need to have a this on the agenda again.
Yep.
To consider follow up questions. And I think if anyone on the board had additional questions, you think of as you're lying in bed awake in the middle of the night, you could forward them to Anna and Michelle and um we can gather that information up. Um at this time, I would like to open this up for visitor participation. If anyone wishes to make any um comments or has any questions for our experts here, um I would invite you to approach the mic, is that okay, Mike? Okay, but stick around in case any questions. Anyone wish to speak? Okay, Mr. Martin. We already know your name and address, so.
You don't have to move. So first question I have, is the presentation going to be available on board docs later? Don't know.
Yes, yes.
And just another list of things to happen. Potential future meeting is figuring out what the two point five million split would be between the building parcel and the land parcel.
Yep.
And then don't suppose anyone on the board knows why the two parcels are under different names?
No idea.
I remember last year when I attended these, just as a citizen, just as a Katie who does these things. Um that they could not historically figure out why that, the people who were paid to dig into these things were shocked to discover that and could not figure out, digging through records, why that had been done.
And how much of the building is currently being leased out? Is it all of the building just part?
I see heads in the audience.
So the building is fully occupied? Yeah, our tenants say it's fully occupied.
That case, I'd recommend, and I know I'm probably going to get some angry glares at the back of my head, but raising rents or leases, that you all don't pay any taxes or mortgage interest, which are the biggest expenses most of the time. No reason you shouldn't be running some profit on it and make it more tolerable for the people that are probably staring daggers in the back of my head currently.
They're not, they're actually not.
For everyone's opinions.
You could put most of that profit back into building repairs, upgrading things, making things more ADA compliant to make increased leases more tolerable for people there.
Yeah.
And and potentially down the line, if you are looking at selling, which I don't recommend, since hopefully you should be making profit and feeding that into the education for the district. But did you just look at selling one parcel rather than both of them?
Thank you. Thank you for your comments, Mr. Martin. Anyone else wish to speak? I see a hand up. And if you could just uh state your name and address for the record. And welcome.
Michelle Source, sixty five, twenty five North Grange Line Road, Glendale, Wisconsin. Um you were asking Danielle about how many residents we have for Glendale or that we serve and everything. We did do something at one time. I do have another topic if you guys wanted.
Right.
As of right now, we serve at least a hundred fifty four Glendale residents.
Mm hmm.
Student, students compared to a hundred nine. Students compared to a hundred and nine Glendale students.
This is just at Glendale Heights, right?
At Glendale Heights, that we have, for a total enrollment of two hundred and fifty-four. Not at one time, because we're only licensed for two hundred, but we have. Yeah, so there's only two hundred at a given time at, at the time. And approximately eighty-eight students come from Parkway. Now, granted, Glen Hills, we only have three students that come, but we also put three students on in the morning because of the timeframes and everything, I mean. Right, today getting them off of that bus, it was just like, oh wow, all but two kids got off of the bus. So there, there is quite a lot that we do get, so I don't know too much, or I can't.
Yeah, we love, we would love that, maybe you can leave it with some ninety-one district students that would.
Some of the. And two from here, and we also serve at least three Glen Hills staff members, have their kids there, and countless Parkway students that are there, that all serve for the, the teachers that are here and everything.
Thank you.
Um, I do want to read one letter that we received from a parent who unfortunately is no longer at our center, and unfortunately also chose not to continue within the Glendale School District and everything. Glendale Heights staff, as we start the next chapter of the girls' education, it has, it has us excited yet devastated. You protected, loved, and nurtured our babies for years and will forever remain in our hearts. Through their highs and lows, tantrums, and hugs, you have been their safe space and consistent advocates. There are a few animals our girls haven't been, and probably even fewer staff members they haven't met. We have always felt safe and reassured the girls were in the best hands and their needs were met. Thank you for dealing with our crazy schedules, checking in if wasn't, one wasn't there on an anticipated date, and of course, for helping me locate child C on those times when she created her own bus and schedule. Oh, yeah. We had many opportunities with that, and it was a good partnership with Parkway School, because we could call them and say, hey, so-and-so didn't get off, what happened? And so, you know, working very closely with the school districts here. Hopefully food, hopefully food costs will decrease now that you don't have to feed child C six snacks a day. Our children will always look back at their Glendale Heights years and remember everything the staff did to make sure they had fun, were safe, and developed into these three tiny but mighty human beings. My husband and I are forever grateful for every staff member at Glendale Heights. It has been an amazing five years. You are all superheroes caring for these children like they are your own. Glendale Heights is able to cul- cultivate amazing futures for these tiny humans, because each and every staff member. Thank you for raising our girls alongside of us and loving them even when they made it difficult. You all have one of the most difficult jobs in the world, and you do it effortlessly. Thank you for showing up, teaching them, and being one of their greatest champions. Thank you, thank you, thank you, our deepest gratitude, and they named the family. I wanted to share that with you, because teachers all over don't always get that pat on the back. And I thought what you guys did for the school, starting off their year is awesome and wonderful. We had a day where we did some training and getting some teamwork going for our staff. We don't have the ability to take off, because we have families that need childcare. And that's why we're here, and that's why we have teachers dedicated. That's why Glendale Heights is very, very dedicated to our staff to make sure that we will support any and every staff to go back to college, pay for their tuition, so they can get their degrees, because we know how very important it is given this opportunity to touch these little children. And I started to hear from the board more understanding on how we are very much a part of the community, where before I felt like the board really didn't see us as part of the community, and I'm starting to see that you're beginning to really understand the need for high-quality childcare. And for these families that need this care before, after school, and before they even reach. And once again, listening to the K four teachers over at Parkway talk about how our children come to them well-prepared, and I don't mean academically, I'm talking socially, emotionally, we prepare our kids, and that's what we really, really work so hard with, is making sure that they can learn to wait, that they know how to say please, or instead of just saying sorry, they understand why they are sorry, all those social emotional skills that they need, that so many children are lacking. And you see a difference at Glendale Heights, and I encourage all of you to come and visit us and to take a tour and see what our teachers are doing. Maybe after the first week. Listen about.
Michelle, I'm gonna, I'm gonna be the rude president, ask you to wrap it up in the next minute.
Yep, and I'm all set, I just want to say, you know, I give you guys the opportunity to come and just take a look to see what the investment is over there, that you guys can support.
Thank you, thank you for speaking.
And so that's the chart, right?
I gave it to Anna, and she will.
Okay, otherwise I'm gonna email it.
Okay, anyone else?
I promise briefly.
Okay.
Oh, I'm not, thank you.
Okay, I did, um, create a little bit of a bio about what Glen Hills does for the committee and the school district. If you agree with that.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm just gonna say they've been doing it for a long time.
Yeah. We two have been there and done that. Okay.
Cheryl Peters, twenty-three fifteen West Good Hope Road, Glendale, Wisconsin. Um, I just want to say that I, as a business owner, I understand if financially you do end up having to sell the building. Um, I'm not here to say that you have to keep the building, all I need to ask is that um, you work with us to allow us some time. We had heard, you know, that there is a possibility of the building may being sold, but I, so we have been looking into possibly building another locate, or adding another location. We would rather stay in Good Hope School forever and ever and ever. If that turned out to be that we could, we would then have a second location, but we are in the works trying to get a building so that we can move our students if we need to. So that being said, again, we'd rather stay in the school district building, but otherwise we may have two locations, but we're in the process of trying to have another location, so that if you have to sell, we can relocate our customers, because they won't have anywhere else to go. Every center is filled, and with having over two hundred and fifty children, there will be no place for these customers to go, so I just I'm calling, please work with us so that we have some time. Unfortunately, it could take a year. I did just put an offer in on a building, but it needs renovations, it needs to go through zoning, it needs to have a traffic study, so I just need time, and that's why I'm asking, I'm advocating for my parents, is that please, if you do end up selling a building, please work with us so that we could move them successfully to the other location. And I know legally you could, you know, give us the boot after a month, but I'm asking morally, please, you know, work with us. We have done so much, I give every year to the Glendale River Hill School District Foundation. We have given this year, it says in there seventy-five thousand dollars worth of tuition graces for our discounts for the staff of the Glen Hills River Hill School District, but this year it'll probably be closer to eighty-five thousand now. So I just, we try to give back, so please, that's all we're asking, is that you work with us if you are making a decision. And I truly understand if I have to make a decision, just please, thank you.
Thank you so much for sharing your thoughts. Okay, anyone else? All right, this was a good discussion, we'll no doubt be coming back to it at another upcoming meeting. Mike, thank you so much for coming.
Good to see everybody, thank you.
All right, so can I ask, when do you think would be appropriate to revisit, to have, to have follow-up, to think about the questions, ask them, get some answers? If you have to do stuff and take a leak, I mean, when? When you time to gather all of that information, try to answer some questions, I'd like to specify exactly based on the questions the board has. So I would look at revisiting in November.
Yeah, it's October, we have to look at our budgets, and then, doesn't it seem like November would be the right time after the referendum?
December.
Yeah.
The timeframe that I think. Oh, there's, yeah, yes, that makes sense.
Yeah, hypothetically, if it was just informational, it could be workshop, but I think it would be better on a regular meeting agenda.
Thank you.
Okay, ready to move on? Item, thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Item four D, school safety plan. Right?
All right, uh, school board policy eighty-four-twenty states that the school board should approve a school safety plan that shall be reviewed and approved every three years. The school board has been provided with a copy of the school's safety plan, which has been contained and has been content to the security of our students and our staff and our buildings. It is however recommended that the school board make a motion to approve the school's safety plan that has been shared in administrative content.
So that is what we call the emergency operations plan, right? Just that one document?
Yes.
Okay, uh, before discussion, is there a motion?
I move to approve the emergency operations plan.
Second. Okay, discussion. Anyone have comments or thoughts? Danielle?
Yeah, I just want, Anna, I know that I had sent you some questions, and I do believe you said you changed the language that the quarterly reports for the craze and the tornado will go to you, is that in this one that's attached? Okay, thank you. The other thing that I just wanted to maybe hone in on was the emergency drill logs, which mainly track fire drills, right? Monthly, I think that's the tornado and the craze are the two that happen annually, or, okay. Would it be onerous, would it make sense to include those as part of like a consent agenda item that the board approves? Insert a reasonable amount of time, like quarterly, or I don't know, or every six months or something like that? Just so that it's a accountability thing.
So typically, the, the, and the year is closed, that is one of the tasks of the building principals, is to compile their report and log that they keep on here, so it could go on to a consent agenda in the last meeting of June. If the board wanted a more regular update, we could look at doing that, we, you know, in January. Like each semester, okay? So if you would like to see that information come forward on a more regular basis, I'm happy to do that as well.
Okay, and then the other piece, and forgive me if you address this, but there are written evaluations that are done of the, is it the craze, the tornado? Not the fire drills, I imagine, or, okay, so there's written evaluations the board has to review that would come at the same time as the, like, the June one.
Yeah, and those are typically the, for the craze drills, and so when those drills are held, it is typical for us to work in conjunction with law enforcement to have them come and observe the drill and partake in some of those conversations with our students and give us feedback around some of the things that have come up in that, in force of that drill. So though, we would provide feedback around that, and then we provide feedback to our teachers too as well.
Okay, and that would be part of like a package given to the board?
Yeah.
Okay.
And would you like X Y Z or orange?
Well, I think it's just you do the one craze, right? And that would be a written evaluation.
I like the idea of a June package, just one year, and then, because then it's on our board calendar.
Right.
It's just something we can look forward to in June.
So gorgeous.
You know, I think as we catch, I'm sorry, is it okay?
Doesn't, yeah.
I think as we catch these things, sort of legacy missing pieces, like the board approving this emergency plan, which has not occurred.
We have approved emergency plans, but we have not been shown written evaluations of them in the past, so.
Not in the three years these have, this hasn't been approved, right?
Yeah.
Well, anyway, as we, I, I mean, I think our school board calendar will become enriched with these sorts of regular, kind of accountability pieces, so I appreciate you asking that and bringing that up.
I would also like to add that part of our continuous work around our school emergency plan, and our safety plans would be to have them in a consistent state of review. Michelle Brown, Mr. Williams, Principal Williams, and AP Williams, and Mr. Craig are all attended a local meeting with schools in the North Shore to talk about safety practices. Michelle Brown has a lot of background and training in school safety, as well as Mr. Leon Williams' AP does, so we will be looking to form more work around this and revising and continued eyes on this to make sure that we have a plan that is a living document as well.
Thank you, Anna.
Chris?
This isn't precisely in the plan, but it's part of a plan. In the event that we would need extra counselors for something, do we have a partnership with our partner districts to help out in that realm?
Yeah, it is not uncommon for us to rely on our partner districts to help support us with, with, with student services members, and I know that they would be willing, as we would be willing to help support them. Thank you, Grace.
Yeah.
All right, any visitors wish to comment on this agenda item before we move on? Anyone online? Any further comments by board members? All right, there is a motion to approve the school safety plan, which is actually entitled the Emergency Operations Plan. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes, the emergency operations plan is approved. Moving on to item C, citizen advisory committees. We have three topics here, and we'll just run through them. I want to start with human growth and development, Anna, does that work?
Yeah, so our school board policy around human growth and development, which is policy twenty-two fourteen, calls for the establishment of a citizen advisory committee in accordance with our board policy, I mean, which is our policy around a citizen advisory committee, to be established, to advise the board on the design and implementation of human growth and development curriculum, and to review the current curriculum that is in place. So the ask would be of the board is to designate a citizens advisory committee, or the establishment of that committee to be determined, staff is appointed by the superintendent, we would be seeking out other members of our community to make up that group, which would then be approved by the board to review our human growth and development curriculum for the district.
Okay. Can I make this motion? Because I've thought carefully about the language.
Okay.
So this would be a motion to establish a citizens advisory committee on our human growth and development curriculum in accordance with board policy ninety-one forty and Wisconsin statute one eighteen point oh one nine five. Did I get that right? Yeah. There's the motion.
Second.
Okay, discussion?
A term, what, what do you think for like a term for this? Would it be a permanent and ongoing committee? Would it be a one year? How often would you, Anna, want to report on the? Would you, I imagine you would report to the board on behalf of the committee, so how often, unless that's in my beautiful calendar already, which I probably am. Those are the, like, I think those are the things that I would want to know more specifics on.
I think it would be appropriate for us to extenuate this, it sounds like it needs to be an ongoing committee, but I think the purpose of this committee even this year would be to take a look at our current human growth and development, which is utilizing some of the outreach work that we've, we've done in different formats. human growth and development, which is utilizing some of the outreach work that we've, we've done in different format for the last couple of years, and that has shifted. So I think having some evaluation of that program and making some recommendations would be the work of the committee for the school year.
Okay. For the school year, so that are reported yet.
Yeah, and then we can make a determination on
Okay.
on how that needs to unfold after those recommendations come.
Okay.
I guess my question is more so um, with regards to appointments, so and participation, again, I would just ask like, what would we think about as terms or potential limits for appointments, or would they, like, how do you perceive this to be? Working?
So the, the term of it would be just for the school year, right? So we would look at that being the term of it, um, appointments, um, I would be responsible for staff appointments and then outline in policy twenty-four fourteen or some specific members that they're seeking out, so we would seek those out. I would bring those to the board for approval of those, and also a schedule of the meetings. So looking at probably some cyclical meetings um, with the members of that um, um, advisory committee, and I think making a series of recommendation based on the current curriculum would be the task that they would be tasked with.
And so, because this is brand new to me, so my understanding then is we have to do this every year. Right? We have to approve the human.
No, we don't have to do it. There's no timeline in the statute. It used to be a three-year um, time. You'd have to approve H G curriculum every three years. They removed the time language, so now the statute just says you have to have a committee that advises, and so it's kind of in our purview to say how often we want to revisit.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it doesn't need to exist in perpetuity. It just needs to exist at some point, have done its job, and then it can be dissolved. That's not what I understand.
Okay.
I, do you read the statute? I don't know that, I think this, the statute is not, that's an interesting question.
Statue doesn't have a time.
Yeah, you think that.
That it used to, but it was specifically removed. That you had to convene a committee every three years, or it had to be, it had to be reported to the board every two years.
It's a very lawyerly interpretation, like, we'd establish it for a period of time, then dissolve it, and we met a statutory obligation.
Ever. You could have it in perpetuity and it could never make a re.
Can I show a question? Chris, please.
I'm wondering if this is something we need to resolve right now, because we already said we were going to do it through the end of the year. If we could figure that out in off time and then come back to it.
Yeah.
Thanks for keeping us on track.
Yeah, but I think we are
So unlike.
We have a statutory mandate to have this committee though, and I, I would like to be in.
Oh, for sure.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
It, it might be a recommendation of the, of that committee also to think about the cyclical nature of that. I know typically reviewing curriculum on a three to five year cycle, that's a pretty normal practice, so I'm kind of thinking about how that aligns with our other curriculum review as well.
Well, that's how the P E cycle of her, with Jenica would present, it would always, her presentations would align with their curriculum, you know, like.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so
Right.
we could ask the boards or that committee to make a recommendation about how often they think that that should occur as well.
Okay, any visitors wish to comment on this? Yes. State your name and address for the record, please.
Hello, I'm Kelly Steiner, seven thousand one North Braver Plain in Gundale. Um, and I sat on the committee ten or twelve years ago, the last time it happened.
Sounds great, yeah.
And at that point, I think we could have mentioned something, but that was like the statutory meeting where they have to have a certain percent of clergy and a certain percentage of community members who don't have children. Or don't have children in schools, and um, last time we did that was the first time they brought all the Nicolay feeder districts together. So we had one big committee with all of those districts and Nicolay at Nicolay. Um, and there was some assets to that, some networking among staff perceived as an outside non-staff member here. Um, and a different feeder district that is not us had some super icky and outdated language that people from our community got to say, hey, 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 let's talk about what you mean when you say unwed mother. And the statute has really icky language, and so it allowed for a much more communal, we have each other's backs, this is how we do equity here approach to interpreting that statute language. Um, although I think, you know, curriculum is going to be more dependent on each group, and um, I really appreciate Superintendent Young's um, perspective on that being kind of roving because also as a member of the hopefully about to happen again Equity Committee, um, and having been a human growth and development educator for fifteen years, the way we teach and talk about it has become increasingly more inclusive and less heteronormative and less sex negative over time, and I would hope that we continue as we learn to do, to know better, to do better.
Thank you, Kelly.
Okay, go away.
Thank you for that, Kelly. Anyone else? Mr. Martin?
In the last part of the policy, it says the district shall notify parents in advance of the instruction, give them the opportunity essentially to out-doubt the instruction, and have you essentially ensure the parents actually get it, not that say the student would purposely forget the form, but say they lost it and.
Uh, that form is, and, and the notice that, that um, curriculum is going to be taking place is um, emailed directly to parents. It is not given to students to transport to parents.
I remember getting the email.
Yep.
Yeah, every year. Thank you for that question, Mr. Martin. Okay, any further comments or discussion, board members? All right, we are looking at a motion to establish a citizens advisory committee on human growth and development in accordance with policy nine-one-four-oh and Wisconsin Statute one eighteen point oh one nine-five. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, on to wellness, where there had been a question of whether we need a wellness committee. Anna?
Yes, um, wellness and, uh, wellness committee needs to be established. It is a district um, committee, not a citizens advisory committee. So it is um, established by the district and should be encompassed of different collaborators within our district community to help develop a wellness policy for our district.
Right, the policy specifically says district committee, not board.
Right, 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 so.
Uh, any concerns about that? All right, so that's not a motion, and then the third, but I guess going back to Danielle, uh, Danielle's question, regular question, like, will we be getting reports to the board on the work of the wellness committee?
Yes, so um, we do have some policy updates that will be revisiting um, in our wellness policy, and then that wellness policy will continue to be informed by the district as well, as they make some selections um, within the Niola policy in terms of what the focus of, of the group will be.
Oh, okay, so the, the committee is going to be looking at the wellness policy first and sort of making recommendations around that?
So the wellness policy exists in its state as adopted by Niola for current recommendations, but there are options within that policy.
Okay.
So we are going to revisit some updates to the policy as a whole.
Okay.
And then as we develop wellness committee, they will look at that policy, explore those options, and make the recommendations to the board based on that. And then that, that group should be comprised of educators, students, and our school nurse, and, and um, members of our stu-, our student support team as well. So we'll have a comprehensive look at, at wellness in our district through multiple eyes of different collaborators within our school system.
Community members?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, okay.
Do you have a sense of when we would hear, hear, hear about it?
Um, I would think that the team would need several meetings. I would put it on kind of the same cycle as this team in terms of looking at the length of the school year to really look at what are the current, the current existing practices, what is the current existing policy, and what recommendations for change would have to be explored. So I would look at a year's timeframe in terms of making those recommendations to the board to update that policy.
Yes, and so it's my understanding, is there some report tied to this that we have to give to DPI or the state? There was like, uh, when this came around, came up last year or the year before, and we needed to create it, there was some report that we needed to submit to the state around. Okay, I'll, I'll.
Off the top of my head, I don't have any answers.
Okay.
Like, can, can I get back to you on that?
Let me, I'll, I'll do my.
And our wellness policy, I know, should be um, referenced on our school website and shared within our school handbooks as well, so.
Okay.
The areas.
I'll follow up with you if I find it.
Okay.
Okay, anything else? Nope. All right, third committee on the agenda, the Equity Committee, um, which has existed for two years. And uh, this question here of whether whether and how to reestablish that Equity Committee consistent with our new um, policy on citizens advisory committees. So I, and I'm looking at this agenda and seeing that this is probably a discussion item for today. Um, so, discuss? Have thoughts, comments? Questions?
I do, um, but I, they're like in process still, but I've been, I've been researching and looking at other charters for Equity Committees, thinking about the last two years, what we've done. I think it's imperative we have this committee. I, I think uh, a specific charter would serve it well. Um, you know, and I, I think about, um, we touched a lot about, on engagement in the last year. We touched a lot on, um, uh, publicizing our equity non-negotiables and our, our um, equity lens and, and creating cohesion amongst the school and within the district on, on those priorities, right? Um, but we also talked a lot about accountability. Um, and so when I start to think about what the second, what this third year might look like, um, I think that, uh, like you could look at um, the, the group as a mechanism for transparency and accountability engagement. You could kind of hone that in, and you could think about reviewing policy, reviewing practices, um, and then making recommendations to the board uh, around that. That's very vag-ish, but I mean, like, I think, to me, I think that, uh, yeah, and, and I think you would do well to end focus on engagement perhaps with some of our, some of the communities we know, like, we have an equity survey. We had, we had that a long time ago. There's still a lot to probably process and unpack about disenfranchised staff of color, um, disenfranchised, um, families of color uh, in our district. I also think about an equity audit, which to date, like, we haven't really engaged in.
Did we have an equity audit?
No.
We didn't, right?
Right.
We talked about it, but it never happened.
And so like, just kind of, so for me, I'm just wrapping my head around how community staff, perhaps students, how we can how they could engage and help us push our equity work forward and challenge us probably, because we all maybe are very comfortable in in how we understand equity and the work we're doing, so.
That's how it's structured.
Exactly, so that's how I think. I think that we've talked about whether board members should lead it. I personally think a board member, board members could be on it.
Our, our policy doesn't allow.
Oh, great.
Policies, in a way, that, um.
Oh, thank you.
If you look at the policy on, which I
Okay.
You know, it, it, it makes sense when you think about what the role of an advisory committee is, I don't like to find it, but it basically says, uh, it requires that a layperson
Great.
be the chair, but board members can be, um, what do they call it, ex officio member.
Great, that's, then I agree with our current policy. So, thank you. So I, I don't know, so I, I don't think we would, maybe we'll get to like a, an agreement on a specific charter, but and I would love to hear how the administration would like to engage, because that was one of our biggest difficulties in the first year was like, sort of being siloed, which is good, because you have your own perspective, but not knowing how to effectively engage with administration so that the, our goals were like shared and we could support admin and what they were doing. So, yeah.
I would add to that, that, um, having been at the kind of wrap-up meeting that we had last year for question, but, you know, um, that I think that's kind of the, the, like, core members who are still showing up, um, that that's kind of where they were at anyway. Like, maybe this isn't a board-led thing anymore, this is like, um, we'll do it, you guys can still come, sort of thing. So, yeah, so, like, I feel like the existing members of that committee would also be on board with that, and there were some directions they were wanting to go that I would honestly, I'd probably take with board involvement, like, they wanted to start potentially, um, like, fielding complaints, which if you have, which right.
The district has a policy, I mean, I think.
Right, 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 I know, but I'm saying like, there's things that like, if, and if, it's just gonna happen, like, there were teachers already who were, you know, getting that sort of complaint. When you're a board member there, if it's a thing that is potentially gonna rise to have to come before the board, then I shouldn't be hearing it before.
So, um,
it really depends where that, where it ends up going, like Dan, like Danielle's point, but I do think it should kind of the board gave birth to it, but now maybe we hand it off.
Yeah, but I, I think even if we hand it off, we have to define that our policy requires, and I also think it's good practice to define the scope and charter of it for the year, like, we wouldn't, when it started, it was much more free-form, right? We were kind of struggling through, like, what do we actually do with our time? But I, I think we need to give a very specific charter with, and I, I'm actually surprised by the policy. I read it, but I didn't remember what a great policy it is. You have a, you have a sunset, right? You get a report and there's like a, a task you have to give to the advisory committee. So I think as a board, that would be what's incumbent on us. If we um, decide to establish this committee, we have to very quickly define the scope of its work in the year ahead. So, and we haven't had that dialogue yet.
You're right, and you can't, you can't establish it without that existing at the same time. Like, you have to have the charter and the scope, so you know specifically what you're referring, I think.
Hold on, I'm trying to read it.
I think it'd be best practice.
Yeah. Specific topics for study or well-defined areas of activities shall be assigned in writing immediately following its appointment. Uh, so I, I don't know what immediately means, so hypothetically, um, I mean, me, I prefer to do it all at once, right? I like to establish the committee and at the same time, establish the scope of its work for a year.
Would it, so, could, could I tell you a couple of the things I've read in terms of like, what other equity committees do, what does our charter say? Um, review district curriculum, so it reflects diversity, provides the ability to thrive in a multicultural society. Uh, promote, well, so some of these seem, seem to fall into the admin area, but it's like, how could they become like a community or equity community? How could that fit? Um, assure fair and equal treatment of all students, evaluate the effectiveness of the district effort regarding equity. To set common goals and visions for equity across our district, we've done that. Demonstrate our commitment to achieving equitable outcomes for students of color. Outcomes must not be predictable, you can widen that category. To ensure every student in our district feels welcome, safe, valued, and has honored identity in our schools, you could have families there. To facilitate open communication and meaningful dialogue with families and communities of colors, that might be like an engagement piece. Um, to provide a mechanism for both accountability and transparency and advancing equity, which speaks to me uh, a lot because that seems like there would be some tangible outcome, but it could be organizing events, it could be community engagement, it could be reviewing specific policies, it could be outreach to the staff, or, you know, like, there's a lot of ways that could go, but these are just some of the, some of the things that I've seen, like, other schools doing.
I mean, it feels like right now we don't have the capacity to move, to approve this tonight.
No.
But what I would appreciate is if we were able to, to kind of have more, a more concrete proposal presented to us.
That's, that's where my head goes, of course, like, if you, if you have a, I know, like, Katie, you really want to stay engaged with this deeply, like, develop a proposal.
Except that's a board-led, I mean.
Yeah.
To the degree, I mean, I think the board defines scope in conjunction with the admin, I, I agree, but I feel like you might, we might want to identify who the community leaders might be and, and understand what they, like, what they might bring to it. Or you think we should just straight up be like, this is what it is, so we want, want to do this.
That's what the
It's what the policy.
policy requires, right? If what you do is establish the committee and then try to, I mean, if what you want to do is first find the leadership and then have a dialogue with them about what the committee could do, then make the motion to establish the committee. That's fine, but that, that will go slower, right? Yeah, but I mean, in a perfect world, that's an ideal, right? Is to dialogue with community.
And because of, we've done this for two years, we have somewhat of an email list. We can class that out to the people we know have already been involved to see what.
So for instance, if Kelly Steiner wanted to be the chair and was going to lobby for that and were to connect with Katie and discuss what the charter of that committee might be for twenty-four, twenty-five, and that proposal was put on the agenda at the next meeting, then we could have a very specific discussion, right? I'm all, I'm a fan of that kind of pragmatism.
Somewhere meeting with our superintendent and see what
Whatever that looks like.
Charter might, and how that would
To-
Support the work we're already doing, you know?
Right, and be, embedded in the strategic plan pillars and all that kind of stuff, so.
Could we come back to this in October? Give us like, a few weeks to chat.
I feel like that's when we adopted the last two years, too, was October, so that would be consistent with what we've done. Because it also goes a period of months, so.
Yeah, before you start having this.
So my concern is because we always have all these big dreams and we've worked in sort of a loose, incoherent way, because it's been, it's an origin, right? It feels like now, if we wanna act with urgency, we need to have, like, focus in on a more concrete practice for the year.
Last year kind of lax.
And so that, o- obviously, what I, you know, what I did, who's gonna be in charge of that? Right, is the question, who's gonna lead that effort of development? If someone wants to commit to doing that, that would be great.
And that could be presented with that, maybe in October, like, just, like, really have a clear presentation, so we know not as involuntary.
I'll help, I just question like my, uh, but I definitely hear none of this.
All right, then let's-
Cool.
No, but I, I really wanna, I, I, I enjoy sort of diving into this, and so I could even be like a go-between if I'm talking to community with you and becoming.
Yeah, and I'm happy to talk about it, I just don't wanna-
Be in charge of it this year.
For anything.
Well, you literally can't, so.
So, uh, yeah, so, okay, so me and Anna somewhere on an October agenda.
Yeah.
Probably the first October meeting.
Yes, please.
And then, we'll look forward to goals. Goals? Looking at you, Kelly. And everyone knows Anna's here to support that work. All right, and Anna also has some interesting ideas involving, um, organizing work around, like, books. Really specific books that are driving some of this dialogue around equity, so I would encourage you to connect with Anna around some of this.
It's nice to have a superintendent, that's a resource.
Okay, uh, Personnel Updates, Item D.
All right, so School Board Policy forty-one twenty requires board approval of employment for each support staff member of the district. It is recommended that the board approve the hiring and employee hold of the special education paraprofessional at Parkway Elementary School. Um, do you wanna pause there?
Yes, let's do that first. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the employment of, or holds the special education paraprofessional stipulated in the offer letter that's in our documents.
Second, okay, you can have it.
Any discussion?
Welcome aboard.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passes?
Are we now fully staffed for our parastaff?
Uh, our paraprofessionals are fully staffed at Parkway, we are still have two open positions right now.
Closer. All right, and the next item, Anna?
Um, School Board Policy four-one-one-one gives the board, uh, the right to create new positions. Um, the ask to the board is to create, um, uh, positions to fulfill the workload needs currently in the business office. Um, we had, um, abandonment of job position in the district's accounting position, so that position is a current existing position that we have opened up and have posted for. Um, we would also like to, um, look at the creation of a district bookkeeper or district accounting assistant position um, to ensure that meeting the district goals of fiscal stewardship are in place. And Michelle, if you wanna comment a little bit about the workload and the necessity for that position?
Yeah, right now, we are, um, getting behind, there is a heavy workload, um, we have someone, uh, currently doing accounts payable, um, I've been working to um, record journal entries and cash receipts, um, state reporting, budgeting, all those things, and it's not possible to get everything done. We do need to, um, fill that accounting position and then we still need that extra time, so that, um, we can put our systems in place that, um, are needed moving forward, um, the district, you know, in a good position financially and, um, with our records and processes.
Okay, so, the ask is that we approve the creation of an accounting assistant position, the position description is attached in the agenda. Is there a motion?
I move to, uh, create, uh, the position of the district accounting assistant. Second. Let me know that it's up.
Okay, discussion, first question.
I would just clarify that I, it's a part-time position.
Yes, it would be a part-time position, not to exceed twenty-nine hours of working.
Is the full, the accountant position, you said that's the full-time position that's currently posted?
Yep, that is the full-time position that is currently posted.
Okay.
And to be out of any um, that I-
Not supposed to, it was just posted.
Okay, okay. That's great.
And this is the position where the employee abandoned the position, yeah.
So, um, is it typical for the job description to not, if it's typical for the job description not include a salary range, then to make have a salary range in mind? I just, I fully support the position, right? I'm just, where are we getting the money for it?
Right, right, so the, the position would be an hourly wage position with a pay range between twenty to twenty-seven dollars. Um, I'm, I'm excuse me, twenty-five to twenty-seven dollars would be the range for the position per hour. It's not experience.
Yeah, I, I, I just wanna say, I know it's hard to, it's hard to create a new position. It just, because we, we don't have the money, but I also understand why this year in particular, uh, this is almost like a backward-looking position as well, because this is staff that you need to make up for two years of, a lack of bookkeeping and accounting work, so I, I appreciate your willingness to ask for what you need, and I, I support this. Any other comments, questions, any visitors wish to speak? Mr. Martin?
Yes, saying that I fully support getting another bookkeeper to help out on things. Ideally, the business director shouldn't be doing much of any of the data entry on this and hopefully just reviewing it and being able to give a presentation to the board. It's a lot of time to do fairly rote data entry and her time could be better spent on hopefully more important and pressing items like getting a lease agreement for people. Also, not sure if this is an hour later, but a specific question on the forty-one twenty policy. An hour later.
Well, which policy is that?
Uh, now, but it would have been. Is that, you just missed it, yeah.
Uh, you can ask your question, yeah, be my guest.
So, with the federal exempt minimum salary threshold having a large jump, starting one-one, twenty-twenty-five, is there like a list of employees you know that are currently exempt that will not be exempt one-one, so that you can let them know in advance they have to request for overtime?
We need to review that, and we will.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Are you looking for him?
Oh, you are an accountant.
All right, there's a motion pending to create the accounting assistant position, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, wonderful. Uh, on to item E, Employee Handbook Revision.
So, um, Employee Handbook, um, page five, um, paragraph two. Um, last two sentences, um, in prior, prior years' handbooks, um, it has always stated that the school day for staff shall be eight continuous hours in length exclusive of the thirty-minute lunch period, indicating an eight-point-five workup day with a half an hour, um, lunch. Um, our legal team, um, specified, um, which was adopted by the board on our, uh, from August seventh meeting. Um, they specified in this, the last sentence in that second paragraph to say, unless specifically authorized, all staff will be scheduled for a seven-point-five hours of work each work or contract day, which is inaccurate and does not fall in alignment with our, our scheduled workday, right? So, um,
I think Lawrence has interpreted.
Um, so some districts do have an eight-hour workday with a paid lunch, and some districts don't.
Okay. So, and, and our workday technically is eight and a half hours in length, and a part of that is that, that, the contracted time for meetings, so it is not typical to do an eight-hour workday and then four to meetings after work. As part of professional obligation, we schedule all those within that eight and a half hours. It's a full eight-hour workday, it has been consistent in our handbook back to twenty-seventeen eighteen, that this has been the language that's there, this qualifying passage from, um, legal counsel is, is sort of the, the point of, of contention right now, and it needs to be revised, so I would recommend either striking the last sentence or, um, clarifying that that's an eight-point-five hours of work each work or contract day. My preference would be to strike it, and it has been posted in prior handbooks.
So just stick with that first sentence.
Yep.
Eight continuous, eight continuous hours exclusive of the thirty minutes.
That's okay.
That would be the easy fix and take us back to, um, what the language has always been, right? I find it to be odd language. If it, my head would want it to say give the hours of the workday, that's eight and a half hours, and, right? Like, the workday is seven fifteen to three forty-five, and then somewhere I would wanna say the workday is eight and a half hours long, which includes eight paid hours of work and a half hour unpaid lunch. To me, that's most clear, but I'm thinking, I understand what you're saying, keep it as is. But if we just go back to what was, change the seven and a half, or delete that sentence, then if we wanted to revisit this, we could do it when we come back in the spring to think about the handbook and start fixing all the things, right? So, we would need a motion.
I move to approve the technical revision to the twenty-four, twenty-five Employee Handbook, section three, second paragraph, last two sentences, uh, as read, and, oh, that's administrative content, sorry. Strike the last sentence from section three, second paragraph, does that make sense?
All right, we stick how it reads.
Sure, so that it will read. The school day for staff shall be eight continuous hours in length exclusive of the thirty-minute lunch period, and.
That is so slow.
That is a very clear motion.
Yeah, you're welcome, you're welcome.
So we're moving, motion to amend, I'm putting it in my motion book. The Employee Handbook.
Just say the revision as stated by.
Page five, section three, paragraph two, right?
Yep.
And it's a motion to amend it by striking the sentence that reads, unless specifically authorized, all staff will be scheduled for seven and a half hours of work each work or contract day, right? That's, that's the only thing we're changing, Anna.
Yeah.
All right. Any discussion? Any discussion or comments from visitors? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passes? All right, oh, we came so close to hitting the two-hour mark. Item five A, PTO, Wendell River Hills Foundation Update.
I guess that's me.
That's you.
Okay, um, the Fun Run is September thirteenth, I, the foundation and the PTO are continuing to look for volunteers for all events, um, and to attend their meetings, uh, get your tickets to the Fun Run, volunteer, and reach out to me if you, um, want more information, what about that?
It's, um, the Fun Run. Starting at five o'clock.
Thank you.
At Parkway.
At my house currently, there are eight hundred tea lights and eight hundred organza bags waiting to be turned into
Yeah.
the glow part.
There's, um, prep happening this
You wanna go?
Day as well. I know, share it with me.
Yeah, you can sign me in.
Okay.
Would we have to, um, notice if we all gather to stuff tea lights into organza bags? All right, and we'll figure that out, maybe we just have to go two by two.
No, we'll get back to you, we'll, we'll let you know.
Okay, what's that? All right, thank you, Danielle, um, item five B, School Board Resolutions. And, uh, let's just take them one at a time, what do you say?
Sure.
Um, let's start with UNESCO Literacy Day, Chris? Would you like to summarize that for the board? Or talk about it, whatever?
Sure, um, there is a literacy day, um, you know, from UNESCO, um, and, um, thought it would be a good idea to use it to elevate what we're doing in terms of literacy, um, to acknowledge parts of our strategic plan, um, and to acknowledge, um, our, our compliance with Act Twenty. Um, as well as, um, our, our equity work. So, um, I know you don't want me to read the whole thing, I don't wanna read the whole thing. Um, but, um, do we, this one is not the current one that I'm looking at. I mean, the two.
Uh, yeah, in our packages, still.
Okay.
The one that
Maybe I will read.
Presses access to approve had.
Is it the one that's updated down, online?
Yes.
Okay.
You wanna highlight, maybe just a couple, whereas, like, or have some other couple.
Yeah, sorry, I. The correct one is attached online.
Oh.
Right, sorry, I, my computer logged me out, I didn't. Here, would you like me to highlight the great things you wrote? Or have you?
Sure, yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so, well, first let's see if there's a motion, because we're about to head into discussion.
I move to approve the International Literacy Day Resolution.
All right, um, and you just, and you, so, okay, second by Karen, sorry. Um, I, I wanna say Chris wrote this.
Yes.
From scratch, and Chris, you did an extraordinary job, you connected it to our strategic plan and our, um, equity non-negotiables and Act Twenty, and that's just well done, I just, I loved reading it, um, let's see, I'll, I'll, and, and I love that you highlighted the effort of teachers and students, because that's sort of a blind spot for me sometimes, I forget to honor that like in documents like this, so I really appreciated that.
Anna, run for one second.
Yeah, I also wanna do a shout-out, first of all, to you for the, the heavy editing, heavy but kind editing. Um, since I've never written one before, um, and I also wanna, um, point out to highlight one of our educators, um, Ms. Trench, um, one of our literacy coaches, gave me some really valuable feedback and, um, really challenged me to rework it, so I use more asset ba- asset-based. and, um, really challenged me to rework it, so I used more asset-based, asset-based language. Nice. Thus the second resolution, so. Right. Which would be, let's see, uh, which one?
You should have it in an email. I, I emailed you the link as well today.
You, can you read from it then? I'm not a hundred percent sure I have the right one.
Yeah, give me just a second, please.
Anna's got it.
Anna's got it.
Okay. All right, so I, I'm, Chris, I'm just going to go ahead and, and read it, okay? Because I think that's plausible interpretation. And I don't want to misrepresent anything that wouldn't care.
I can hear if you'd rather I did.
Full reading.
It does.
So apropos for what Wisconsin is going through with Act Twenty.
Yeah.
Okay.
Are you up, Chris?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, I'll let you take it away then.
Okay, this is the Glendale River Hills School District Resolution in recognition of International Day of Literacy. I intentionally did put UNESCO in the title because there's some things about using their name without permission, and I just wanted to be careful. Okay? Whereas the Glendale River Hills School Board believes that literacy is a fundamental human right, and the International Literacy Association delineates children's rights to excellent literacy instruction. Children have the right to knowledgeable and qualified educators. Children have the right to integrated support systems. Children have the right to supportive learning environments and high-quality resources. And children have the right to policies that ensure adequate literacy instruction. And whereas being able to read with comprehension provides a solid foundation for learning in other disciplines, for engaged citizenship, and for exercising adult responsibilities. And whereas at least one out of seven people aged fifteen and above worldwide lacks basic literacy skills. And whereas becoming a proficient reader is a source of student pride and joy, impacts feelings of self-efficacy, and provides a foundation for mastery of other subject matter.
Yep.
And whereas readers who struggle, including the twenty percent with dyslexia and other reading disabilities, can learn to read when taught by skilled educators using reset, research-based curricula. And whereas all students can benefit from the instructional strategies and curricula that students with reading disabilities require to become proficient readers. And whereas our strategic plan charges us with closing opportunity gaps. And whereas our vision is to create a community that pursues equity, where each person belongs and thrives, we embrace reading about experiences and cultures different than one's own to foster understanding and community. And whereas our district is committed to offering a culturally responsive curriculum that honors the identities of our diverse student body, and being represented in literature can help students feel seen less isolated and more engaged. And whereas this is the first year of implementing Wisconsin Act Twenty, legislation that requires schools to use evidence-based reading practices and curricula, our district is supplementing our curriculum and where necessary, aligning all reading instruction with science-based practices. And, sorry, I'm scrolling. Sorry, I'm reading as fast as I can.
You don't have to. I love hearing it out loud.
Yeah. Whereas significant disparities remain in our district's reading scores across different populations. And whereas while our educators have received significant professional development in how to teach all readers, we know much work needs to be done. Therefore, be it resolved on this fourth day of September, the Board of Glendale River Hills School District rec- recognizes UNESCO International Day of Literacy on September ninth, which is the day that it actually is, designed to remind policymakers, practitioners, and the public of the critical importance of literacy for creating a more literate, just, peaceful, and sustainable society. And be it further resolved that we celebrate this year's Day of Literacy theme of promoting multilingual education, literacy for mutual understanding and peace. And be it further resolved that we honor our educators for the extensive professional development they have undertaken to keep up with evidence-based practices in reading, and for the hard work they do every day to increase reading proficiency and the love of reading in our students. And be it further resolved that we honor the effort that students put into reading with a special emphasis on the students for whom reading presents a difficult challenge. And be it further resolved that we affirm our existing commitment to using evidence-based practices to help all students become proficient readers. And be it further resolved that we will continue to offer high-quality culturally responsive materials in the classroom and the library, and work to ensure that students can recognize themselves in the books they read. Be it further resolved that we will work to ensure that reading materials are bias-free and student-centered. And be it further resolved that we will also continue to offer materials that expose students to cultures and experiences outside their own to cultivate deeper understanding of the world around them and a deeper sense of appreciation and empathy for those who are different from themselves. And be it further resolved that we commit to continued growth and responsiveness as we embrace our responsibility to facilitate literacy in all children.
Mic drop.
Beautiful, Chris.
Yeah.
All right, there's, is there a motion pending?
Yes.
Yeah, there is. Uh, any further comments or questions? Visitors? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Next one, Latinx Hispanic Heritage Month, which again, Chris agreed to review and update.
And I can, I can, um, just tell you what I changed from last year's, maybe? Would that be helpful?
Sure.
Okay, and you all have the accurate copy. That's what will not be necessary to be doing any inclusive reading. Um, the beginning is, um, pretty much the same. Um, the, um, I added on the second page, um, some different people to highlight. I, I didn't take anyone away, but I certainly wanted to honor the creator of Hamilton and the Heights because I thought that would resonate with many members of our community. And, um, I wanted to also, um, highlight, um, Sonia Sotomayor. Um, I, um, wanted to put something about, um, I added a paragraph about, um, it's not limited to this one month, but that we will continue to strive for an inclusive teaching and learning practices that utilize culturally responsive teaching and curriculum practices throughout the year. And I, I do apologize. I realize that some, in our other resolution, we put everybody's name. The example I love too just had the president and Clark, so.
Well, and that's.
I don't know what is most typical or most current.
Well, I, and that's a question on my list. Do we all want to sign them? I, it's a nice practice if everyone is willing to sign it.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I guess if we had a divided vote.
If it's approved, I mean.
Yeah.
What supports it, so, of course.
Yeah, I think everyone can sign them.
That's a, I like, yeah, just, that's technical. I'll fix that.
Uh, wonderful, thank you.
Oh, let me move, can I move to approve it?
You can.
Do you have any comments?
Well, first a motion.
Of course, yeah. Okay, um, I'll move to approve the resolution in recognition, recognition of National Hispanic Latinx Heritage Month.
Second.
Now discussion. Um, the thing I love most about these resolutions is hearing about them from our staff or students, or, you know, just how they're celebrated in our schools or what we're doing. So I hope that we'll get some kind of report maybe next month. Um, I did note that, I noticed there was like, uh, a parent in one of the groups, like, looking to perhaps, like, do that in effect. Uh, and the PTO might be embracing that, but again, this is kind of that area where it's like, oh, that would be kind of cool to get some, um, community and family engagement on this piece.
It's one of my life goals to get these rainbow resolutions done at the beginning of the month now. Right, as we've kind of sometimes rankled and aligned, so that's like one of my big goals. So I, I would encourage everyone, if you, if something's coming up that you want to have, that's like a resolution for the next month, some celebration, like, go ahead and write it. And we'll get it on the agenda. I, I might block it, World Beard Day, which is in September. We looked at a list together, but.
Yeah, so hopefully, yeah, so maybe I can't wait to see what the district does, and it'll be cool if we get some community members wanting to engage or volunteer into something too.
Yeah.
So.
Anything else? Any edits? Comments from the community members? All right, we're ready to vote then. All in favor of approving, of adopting the resolution in recognition of Latinx Hispanic Heritage Month? See?
I.
See? Any opposed? All right, the last one is Suicide Prevention Month Resolution, which I updated. So I'll tell you what I did. I updated some of the data. In particular, there's a new, um, youth risk behavior survey report. And so I updated some of the data in the whereas section to reflect some of that new information. It's still bad. Last couple of years have improved from the COVID era, but over the last decade, the numbers are still terrifying and, uh, scary. Um, and otherwise, it's pretty much the same. Um, I'm going to recommend uh, two changes to what you have in front of you. So if you'll pull it up on page two, the last whereas still refers stakeholders. And Anna reminded me that stakeholders has a lot of negative connotations, and we should move away from that. So I would propose changing the phrase stakeholders in our community to simply community members. So that would read, um, you know, it's essential to educate and encourage students, staff, and families to recognize warning signs of suicide, guide those in need to appropriate services and supports, and enable conversations among community members to help break down stigma. Okay? And then the second change, if you look at the paragraph above that where it says, whereas access to mental health and social emotional support services and suicide prevention resources is more critical now than ever. I would delete that and replace it with a paragraph suggested by our SEL staff, which reads as follows. Research indicates that universal school-based suicide prevention efforts can prevent the development of suicidal thoughts and behaviors in adolescents. And that youth suicide risk identification and prevention in schools is likely to help high-risk youth obtain needed treatment that they otherwise, otherwise would not have received. Citing A. R. N. Fulpie from two thousand and twenty-three. Implementation of suicide prevention, intervention, and postvention efforts are critical in reducing the threat of youth suicide and supporting student well-being. So I think that's.
That's replacing what? Sorry?
The short paragraph that says
Oh, here.
access is more critical now than ever. It's very specific.
Yeah.
Evidence-based and, uh, just really strongly highlights why it's so important we offer these services and supports in our schools. Which at the open houses, we had our, um, in-house therapist groups present, and it just, it filled my cup. How many years did we advocate for that to happen and to have it, happening to have that presence is, is such a powerful force to smash stigma and, um, get kids what they need to stay healthy and strong. So, um, this one is very personal for me, as I know it is for many of us. And I'm thankful that we have a district where I'm going to make myself proud, where we care about our kids and we put resources into this. And when I think about the work that I do here, the financial challenges we're facing, you know, I think this is, this is why I'm here. Why many of us are here, to enable and ensure that we continue to give our kids what they need because it's not just about test scores. It's also about life, and so. So that's why I think this is.
I'm in a motion to approve national, uh, resolution and recognition of National Suicide Prevention Month.
With the.
Well, it's just a motion right now.
Yeah.
As.
Oh, as, with the revision.
As edited by the board.
Sure.
Second.
Okay.
All right.
Any further discussion?
Maybe I found another incident based stakeholders.
Okay.
Number six, but I think you could easily just change it to members because it already says community stakeholders.
How did I miss it? Paragraph six, so that will say work with local community members. Okay. Perfect, thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that. Uh, I, it's just not mentioned in here that September is the month we're recognizing. Usually we do that. It might not be necessary, but it's September, right? That is especially suicide prevention.
Yes.
So maybe just to note that September was two thousand and twenty-four, thus in the therefore year resolved, we recognize September as.
Oh, they recognize, recognizes September.
September.
As. So recognizes September as National Suicide Convention Month. And supports the goals.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And then I have, so, uh, you know, the student that died by suicide in two thousand and seventeen. I, I believe we lost a school board member to suicide some years ago. And I, and I, I, um, I mean, I also think that down, down the line, it could be, I mean, I'm sure there are a lot of community members who have been touched by suicide. It's interesting to think about. Um, I don't know, sharing that grief or sharing our stories around that as some part of community engagement piece, um, I wonder, do we do any social media, like, awareness around this? Or could we, if we don't, um, about what the resources are? And like, just know that we do recommend this. A good chance to highlight all of the supports we offer for our students. And if there are community resources, we might want to share with community members.
Like in a positive way, like an asset, like.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, typically, our student services team is part of the newsletters. I, I'll speak to Glendale Hills because I have knowledge of that, but I believe it also, um, you know, we specifically talk more about suicide prevention at the middle school level than we do at the elementary level. Um, all our, last year's newsletter around this time contains significant resources and, and language for families as well. Uh, so that it could easily, it's on our, in our Thursday folder book, it could easily be put onto our general website.
Yeah.
That's why.
That as well. Yeah, can be cool. There's, I have a really great group in Chicago called It's Okay Not, or No, It's Not, that's their slogan. It's okay not to be okay.
Right.
That might be the group. Uh, but they do trainings and they do, it's like, uh, youth-led, youth-centered, I think. Um, and really bracelets and just like they, so it's just a group I've seen that's out there if we.
Yeah.
There is.
Reg.
And Reg, I know.
Reg and Red. You, you did some suicide prevention training here for the
Yes.
senior students, right?
Yes.
Think what for this.
Yeah.
You, you like that. Are your daughters old enough yet?
I don't.
Have gone through that?
Yeah. I, I don't know. Some of that last year was pulled out during the math classes. I mean, my girls are, like, one of them was not here for that, that maybe should have gotten it, the other one took part in some of it, like, lower grade level, to like the point when I questioned it, like, counselors weren't really sure which of my daughters I was talking about. So, I don't know, maybe they were supposed to, but yeah, they did.
Yes, I just, I, I, I think talking about it's important. I think de-stigmatizing, I think the stats on the amount of people who have suicidal ideation and how actually common and normal that can be versus like it'd be, you know, escalating. And a lot of people can feel ashamed by that and not understand sort of how much that could be part of the human condition. So I just think it's really important to say these things out loud and to continue to do that and share that with our students and our community.
It's like teaching to the edges. Right? I mean, there are so many kids that get lost who are secretly suffering, even ones who don't access therapy.
Exactly.
So like, sharing this, yeah, this with them is great. It's powerful.
I read the documentary, My Best Friend Died by Suicide, and, uh, so, you know, that's it's important. Thank you.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Oh, I love our rainbow resolution. That's what I call these, just this inclusion and acceptance. I just love this so much. That is it! We've done it! Back through our agenda. Uh, review of to-do items. Next week, we've got our workshop on communications and evaluations. So that's, um, for next week. I, I think we should add, um, on our to-do list, a follow-up meeting, agenda item in November on Good Hope. Anything else?
I also need to add the follow-up agenda item for the Equity.
Oh, yeah.
Good call.
Okay. Future agenda topics?
Feeling for so.
Yep. Board meeting debrief? Anyone? Anyone?
I think our community was on, I think our raise of our community was very, um, visceral and appealing, and that was a good, uh, how diverse we all are and perspectives, how we're all interconnected.
And I appreciate that the community actually trusts that they can come to us and talk to, talk to us about these things.
Absolutely. Yeah, I was going to say that too. Yeah, I was gonna say that too, that it's nice to have people participating and speaking. And uh, yeah, I I also wanna give a a a big thank you to Anna and Michelle continuing to do the heavy lifting, it's been a pleasure working with you so far, Anna. Building these agendas and getting this worked out, so.
I I'm gonna give a huge shout out to Chris because.
Hmm, oh, yeah.
You've waited in and done some heavy lifting that it definitely would have occurred to me to. I mean, and also that you did it so beautifully, so. Yeah, I'm thankful. You can pick over as the resolution director.
Yeah, it's a foundation, create a title.
Huge shout out to all of our staff, I'm opening.
Yes, welcome back.
A lot of work for everything.
Yep.
It's a long one, next.
I'm already packing up, what's left? Item seven, eight.
I moved to the turn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone, for coming and staying with us, Mr. Martin, thank you.